So this is a very timely report. Anybody else? Trustee Lane?
I had a couple of questions.
Oh, okay, sorry. Go ahead, Trustee McDonald, continue, please.
That's okay. Also, with the, it seems like every day we're getting incident reports. And you just showed right now where our standing is as far as teachers and students either being in quarantine or testing positive. I was just wondering, I know we already have a student, a teacher shortage. How is, at what point is it going to get where we just cannot continue educating students? Because so many teachers are, we have no replacements and so many teachers are either combating or in the hospital or whatever the case may be. Are we, I guess what I'm saying, are we at a point where we know that that's possible? Or do we know when there would be red flags saying this is a major issue? We've got to take into consideration and change course?
Yeah, I can comment on that. So the county health department would be guiding us with that, those decisions depending on the number. Now, if we're just saying how many in a building, and again, it goes to the contact tracing, whether the outbreak occurred in the school or if it's just people that came in and then they weren't exposed because they were social distancing. So those are two important factors. It would become a staffing issue then, yeah. If you have several teachers, you know, even if it was in the community and not in the school, that you have to quarantine them, well, you may have to make a decision on that school. If you have multiple staff that can't, although right now they can do it online, they could work from, you know, home quarantined if they're, if they're physically able to or healthy enough. But there would be a decision we'd have to make if there were, if there were a lot. I mean, right now, we're not at that point, but we haven't started with any students in the building. Once we start the learning labs, it's going to give us information, I think. And you do see, you know, and I am concerned about the number that we've had that, just without even students other than the athletics. So those are very concerning numbers. And so, yeah, at some point, we may have to make a decision. We don't have enough staff in this building, depending what happens, of course. So that would be.
I was just wondering if we have any idea when that point would be?
Um, I, you know, I guess it would be when you have so many staff in Wayne County says you now have an outbreak in the school. So there's not an actual number.
An outbreak is, I believe, two or three people in one building.
Yeah.
So it doesn't take much to declare an outbreak.
Trustee Thorpe, please.
This would be on the heels of what Trustee McDonald just said and Superintendent Malaico alluded to it. So right now, when, when I see the report personally that says that a teacher tested positive or a student tested positive, I'm not necessarily thinking sick day because everything's online. If they're, they can be positive, but they don't have to be showing any symptoms, can the teacher still not teach? Can the student still not learn? So that's just one thing that, that I'm, I'm thinking. It's not that you have to take a sick day, so to speak, right now.
Anything else, Trustee McDonald?
Yeah, I did have one other. In this, I, I just wasn't sure. I need a little clarification. When you were talking about in, the one that caught my mind, my eye was the six to 12 option, sixth to 12th grade option. When you were talking about students like A group and B group, and they would go to like second, third hour Monday, and then fourth, it's Tuesday, so on and so forth. Through, there's five days a week, so the math doesn't work out where that's even. So I'm just wondering if, especially for like middle school students that still need parent supervision, how can a parent know when their students are going to go to school? If, I'm assuming it would flip every week to get three days in for one group, and the next week that group would get two days in? Do you understand my question?
Yeah. Trustee McDonald, so for example, when I was the principal at Woodworth, we had specials and we did A, A day, B day for specials. And so it was just constant. So Friday you were at B day, then Monday everyone knew to go to their A day. And it just continues throughout the entire school year. So it does end up being pretty even. And then whatever classes you were in the day before, you go to your opposite classes the next day.
So then parents would just have to know that their students would be in school, especially I think in middle school students, would be in school one week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, the next week, Tuesday, Thursday, and they would have to work their schedules around knowing that.
Yeah, I would just ask my kids or follow their calendar.
The schools do a good job putting out the calendar. I've had to deal with this now for three weeks and three years at least. And I can't keep it straight, but the schools are pretty good each weekend that they will send something out to remind you Monday is A, A or B day.
It's true.
Trustee Mosib?
Yeah, I had a question about whenever we have a case like staff member is confirmed positive case. So what is the current protocol as far as these, disinfecting the entire school? And do we wait a few days until we bring staff back to the school?
That's all dependent upon, on Mason. The nurses could probably answer better, but they work with the county and they determine if there was any contacts within. And so I know they have to quarantine then for 14 days once there's a positive. And then there's a protocol. As far as the cleaning goes, I think that, yeah.
Immediately.
We would just immediately have cleaning.
Those areas are cleaned immediately. Trustee Mosip, so it's really not every case. So we get those questions now more than we'd like to. And so what I've learned is that there is no one answer. It's, it's a series of questions that we ask the person that might have been in contact with someone that tested positive or the person that tested positive. Okay, who were you around? Who from the district, you know, what colleagues were you around? And so there's a series of questions that we ask that determines who else is the contact tracing. And so that's what the nurses have been doing. And they report everything to the Wayne County Health Department to verify that what they're directing staff to do and administrators to do is accurate. But it's never one clear answer. It just depends like, well, I was around someone that tested positive, but I don't have any symptoms. Okay, so then you need to quarantine for 14 days because you know that you were around someone that tested positive. Or I have symptoms and I went and got a test and I'm waiting for my results, but I have symptoms. Oh, and I was around someone. So that's going to be probable that you do have it. So it's really not one, one easy answer. I know the study session, it feels like it was 100 years ago, but in the study session there were these slides that Nurse Amy Candace presented and it was like scenario one, scenario two, scenario three. And it, that's why it's, it's never just one answer. It's a series of questions that leads you to what you're supposed to do.
Trustee Pachkov?
I have one other question because we've been talking about what happens if the teachers go down, but we haven't discussed what happens if the custodians and school engineers go down and, or have to quarantine for 14 days. Because we're also, once the students are back in the building, especially, we're talking about all this hyper sensitive cleaning that's going to need to be done. And these people are all over the building. They're not concentrated in, you know, one room. So do we have, I know you've been advertising for.
Long-term substitutes and premier substitutes, yes.
What about for, for those staff positions as well? Especially engineers who have to have a special degree in order to run a building.
So we do have a good pool of engineer substitutes. However, we have had shortages pre-COVID of custodians and of parapros and of bus drivers and technically engineers too. And so those recruitment efforts continue. We have recently talked about like, we really need to get like the, we do the administrative internship program, like we really need to get an internship program for the non-instructional areas as well. Because we have so much talent in our community and there's so many people within our own district that would like to do something different. I might be working in an office today, but I have interest in being a parapro, you know? So we are looking at that, but we continue to recruit as we always did.
Will they be eligible for the governor's program, educating frontline staff? What was, what's it called?
Future frontline, wait.
Futures for frontliners, right? For.
Hasn't been announced yet?
I, I heard something, but I'm not really familiar.
It was in the Detroit News, yeah.
Yeah, it's all, they had a, and I actually saw it. Mr. Cavalluna spoke at it with Governor Whitmer. It has been announced, the grant program.
I'm assuming that the college will start to think about some kind of certificate upgrades, for example, for people that are working with chemicals in the building. Will they be able to determine which are the least, least toxic for engineers to upgrade their skills, for parapros, for grounds, so that they don't just cut down everything? So that they could actually identify plants? I'm assuming that there'll be certifications that the college might be able to offer. And as an educational institution, both the college and the district would encourage people to take advantage of it.
Yeah, I did see the announcement and President Cavalluna did an amazing job at that announcement. I haven't, I have yet to see a breakdown who's eligible to qualify for their free tuition. So I'm sure probably next couple of days we'll be getting more information on that. I see where Trustee Lane's going with this. Maybe that's input that we need to talk to President Cavalluna or maybe reach out to the governor herself with that information. Makes a lot of sense.
But in addition to that, President Barry, there, there are forecasters that are saying that we're going to be affected, not just us, but people will be affected by Corona 80 years out from now. It may be affecting the economy. This is a really long-term thing. So that has implications for salaries for teachers. We have had a decline in the number of student, young people that want to go into teaching. We need to pay attention to that. We need to upgrade education as, as a public service. There needs to be, there's going to need to be more money going into education. We can't just let this infrastructure debilitate and, and, and our people's, people are going to need their skills upgraded as well. So it has a lot of long-term implications, of course.
You're absolutely correct, Trustee Lane. And I'm going to keep quoting you on this, that COVID-19 has taught us a lot of things. Moving forward, these are discussions to be had. Like I said, you're absolutely correct on what you're saying. Completely agree with you. Anybody else? I'm going to go ahead and close out this report, saying that it was very timely. What do I mean by that? I'm sure like my colleagues, we spoke to many parents the last couple of weeks. Usually when I start talking to an extremist, that, that conversation ends like 90 seconds later. I've talked to parents where they're absolutely, there's no way I'm sending my kids to the classroom if you open up. Absolutely not. I don't care if it's 3%, I don't care COVID-19. It's like, okay, it's a personal philosophy. Actually, I had a discussion with a man that kind of like, I didn't even know if he was a parent, but he did call. Literally said that if you would have kept schools open, at most you would have lost 2% of your population. Now, we all know that's not the case, but he was meaning that, that if we would have lost 2% of our 23,000 students, to him it was okay.
That was okay.
That was okay with him, yeah.
You mean lose, lose?
He's never going to vote for me again. He said, he made it very clear. It's like, yeah, we're not here, you know, campaigning for votes, but most of the parents trust us. And I mean that. Most of the parents that, you know, I've talked to parents that, you know, both the husband and wife work. Could you imagine how their life is thrown upside down right now? You know, the single fam, you know, single mom.
Single parents.
You know, single parents, single mom, single dad. They trust us. So what do I mean by this is a timely report? They want to see what's, you know, the, the light at the end of the tunnel, where eventually. So to those parents who are watching right now, I say, this is very complicated. It is very complicated. You've seen just the different scenarios that we're looking at and the team is just, like, you know, Mason was saying, you know, we just go in circles and circles sometimes trying to make a decision. The only thing I would like to, you know, maybe put on the radar is eventually we're going to get back in the classrooms. We know that's the healthiest way to deliver an education for the teachers, for the students. We know we're going to get there eventually. Until we, there's a vaccine, until there's, you know, things are under control, we're going to keep going down this road. I mean, we know that. Okay? The only thing I would like to see on the radar too is eventually start talking about, testing is going to start happening next month. We're going to be doing some more testing in the spring. There's no doubt in anybody's mind that students are going to lose.
Lose, yes.
So let's start putting on a radar. It might be a two-year plan, it might be a three-year plan. How do we get our students caught up? Parents are asking these questions. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you. I presented it, but I have to say there's teachers, administrators, directors.
Sure, we understand it's teamwork.
Teamwork, thank you.
Yeah, thank you to the team, appreciate it. Madam Secretary, next item, please. Oh, I'm sorry, we're still under superintendent update.
Yeah, so I still, and I'll go quickly through the next number. Non-agenda, just a reminder, we said it last month, but the Wayne County RISA has the millage. It's about $7 million for, you know, Dearborn schools. We still have it for two more years, but it will be on. And it's a Wayne County thing, you know, we didn't take a position on it. It was Wayne County that is putting that on. Again, we benefit. So just a reminder to everyone. I want to congratulate Trustee Thorpe, who's the Rotarian of the Year, the Dearborn Rotarian of the Year. Congratulations, I heard about that. Him and I are both past presidents of the Rotary. I know he's very, very active in the Rotary. I also just want to mention too, there was some dialogue on social media and across the state, David had informed me about bands and playing at the football games and things like that. Under the governor's order, while you're in phase four, that's not allowed. So it's not even, we can't even make that determination. However, we've offered alternatives. So if we feel comfortable at some point, we could have separate event just for the band, but they couldn't do it during a football game. Just so that it's clear, because there was some, there was a lot of talk, I guess.
Yes, there was, I saw.
I think it's more of a state level protest, but under the governor's order, we had, you know, we can't, we can only allow the football players, I believe the cheerleaders and then coaches, and then there's a limited number of spectators, which we have that report coming up.
And we're not choosing sports and athletics over the arts and band. That is not our intention at all.
Absolutely. We're a big supporter of the arts and we always have been and we'll continue. And the other thing of Ms. Farage, who did the extended continuity of learning plan, she headed it up with the other executive directors. We had some slides in that presentation, but she also was asked to be on a panel for advanced ed again on a regional level. So congratulations to her with her leadership with the plan. And that is all I have for my updates today.
Great, thank you, Dr. Malaico. Next item, please.
The next item is recognition and acknowledgements, commendations.
Hello, that's me. Clicking buttons and getting to the proper screens. While you guys are having your meetings, we're doing a little monitoring of all of our social media platforms and cable channels behind the scenes. And we had some problems with some audio earlier on the cable channels and got that taken care of. So just want to let everybody know that, thank you for letting us know about that. We appreciate it because, because we don't always know what's happening. So on some of the channels that we're monitoring, because sometimes the signal leaves here just fine, but when it gets to the cable company and then goes out, then there can sometimes be issues. So sorry to take a little time there to get a little technical explanation of what's going on. Let's move right to the commendations. Let's start with adult education and commendations to Ms. Yana Gerasi and Maha Mackey for their leadership with our adult education program. Patrick Brown, who is the Director of Michigan Association of Community and Adult Education, recently wrote praising both of these outstanding educators for their outstanding work within the district and in collaboration with those outside of Dearborn schools. Ms. Mackey was recently elected to the MACAE Board of Directors. The Dearborn Public Schools Adult Education Program is one of the largest in Michigan. And Brown praised the department for its collaboration efforts to meet students where they are and its commitment to changing lives. We also want to give commendations to adult education, Samir Hader. She spent hours learning a new system, including working with district and outside tech support, so she could administer the CASAS test remotely to a student who wants his GED. The student is confined to a wheelchair and unable to attend class in person. So we want to thank Hader's effort, her efforts, and he will now, the student will now be able to take the classes remotely to earn his GED. At the high school level, commendations and special thanks to the Sorrazo family for their donation to the Fortson Athletic Program in memory of their father, Frank Sorrazio Senior. Frank Senior was a longtime volunteer and fan of Fortson Athletics and worked at football games for more than three decades. The family's donation and Frank Senior's memory will be used to support the next phase of gym renovation at the school. Our sympathies, of course, go out to the entire Sorrazio family. Frank Senior's son, Frank Junior, is a teacher at Stout and his daughter-in-law, Julie, is a district interventionist coach. Commendations to Fortson teacher Zainab Shami for being honored by Mohammed Al-Nassar and Mari Ab. Both are former students and are attending MIT and were asked to a selected teacher who is especially influential in their development, and both students selected Miss Shami. We congratulate and thank her for making a difference in the lives of all her students. And at the elementary level, commendations to Nicole Wasniak, kindergarten teacher at Maples Elementary, who was awarded the Detroit Lions Campbell Champion of the Game. She was nominated by Maples' previous playwork coach, Kristen Williams. Ms. Wasniak was interviewed earlier and was featured yesterday on the telecast of the Detroit Lions and Chicago Bears football game. And obviously with the outcome of that game, we know that she was definitely the superstar of that game. We also want to thank, there are so many staff members that deserve commendations. We could go on and on just repeating these names over and over about the many staff members. I just want to comment just quickly and, and say, you know, there's been many comments on social media regarding teachers and what they did this summer and how they were on vacation this summer. And that could not be further from the truth. So many of our teachers worked during the summer, which is their break, and they deserve a commendation for that. They deserve a commendation for all the time and effort they spent this summer learning a brand-new technology system that was put into place in a short amount of time. And for those on social media who prefer to look at the negative and, and, and comment that way, I just want to say that we don't feel that way and we don't do that here in the Dearborn Public Schools. And those comments are not appreciated on our social media platforms. Our teachers are outstanding and they are just working over the top to make sure that the students are learning in a very, very difficult situation. Our IT department deserves commendations for all they've done over these past month, month and a half, and over the summer, working just throughout the entire weekend. Our information technology department, Ms. Fadi Nahid, and all that she's been doing in managing databases and uploading literally thousands upon thousands of databases and names to make sure that these systems are in place. As I said, the list could go on and on and on, and we really don't have time to do that, but I think it's important for our public to know all of the hard work that's been going on behind the scenes by so many of our staff members. And I think all of them, all of them deserve a huge commendation and thank you from all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Acknowledgement of donations.
We have a couple of donations. A donation of $2,500 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for inside-out literacy. And a donation of $2,000 has been offered to Bryant Middle School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for second step. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting, regular P-12 meeting, August 24, 2020, Board Report 20 hyphen 15. Make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes. So moved?
So far.
We have a motion that's moved by Trustee McDonald, supported by Trustee Mosip. Are there any corrections or questions on the motion? Hearing none? Answering none? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Lane, yes. McDonald?
Yes.
Need?
Yes.
Mosip?
Yes.
Pachkov?
Yes.
Thorpe?
Yes.
President Barry?
Yes. We have a unanimous roll call vote. Please attach a unanimous roll call vote to the promotion. Thank you. Next item, please.
Special reports, athletics, MHSAA, Mr. Abe Misher, Mr. Jeff Conway.
Good evening, everyone. Am I connected?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we were asked to just kind of give everybody an update with regards to the MHSAA sports in high school and what we are doing as a school district. I'm hoping that Fatemi is able to share the PowerPoint slides with everyone. If not, let me see if I can.
Abe, I can jump in and do that if you, if you can.
I think I just did it. Is it on there?
No.
No, not yet.
I'm doing it, Abe, if you wanted me to.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Misher, before you get to your report, please explain to our audience that Michigan High School Athletic Association is a separate entity. It's not part of state governance. I just recently found this out because we're getting a lot of questions. My colleagues and I, and I'm sure Dr. Malaico, everybody else is saying, you know, how are you letting students play ex-sport when you're saying it's not safe for students to be in the classroom? From what I understand now, this is a for-profit association. They make their decisions like every other business. They have to follow the guidelines. Can you explain what you know about that, please?
Sure, I'll just basically say, like you said, the Michigan High School Athletic Association has their own rules and guidelines and stipulations. However, they do have to act within the executive orders that are given. For us as a school district, we follow both the executive orders from the governor, and that's actually what slide one says, the executive order from the governor as well as the, the guidelines given to us by the MHSAA. So whatever rules, regulations and procedures they come up with. Now, they're, yes, they are independent, but they are, of course, like all other institutions and so on, have been working with the governor's office with regard to how they can go about having school sports and so on. And there's a lot of back and forth conversation that have gone on as far as what we could do and so on. So for example, we started the high school football, it started, and we had just given out pads and equipment, and then we were told two days later, three days later at the very most, that high school football was going to be suspended. And again, that's based on all the different conversations that took place between the MHSAA and the, the governor's office with regards to what they, what they wanted to do and so on, what they thought was safe. Now, you know, I understand the argument, it's a sensible one as far as, well, how can you have sports but not have school? But then the, the other big part of that is there's, there's, for one, a lot less people involved when you're, when you're talking about high school sports than there are, you know, with regards to a, a, a elementary school, even a small elementary school, with the number of student athletes that we have in comparison to that. So, so it's a lot easier to, to monitor some of the things that need to be monitored and so on. You know, so for example, if we're going to take temperatures of every student that walks in the building, that's going to take quite a bit of time. If we take temperatures, not if we, when we do take temperatures of every student athlete that comes to practice, that's done in a matter of a few minutes. So that's just, you know, one little thing. But to answer some of the questions that were posed earlier with regard to how do we decide what to, what we do and so on when somebody gets COVID or somebody tests positive for COVID or somebody's around somebody who tested positive for COVID? Like Mason, I believe, had said, had stated, as did Dr. Malaico, we communicate, the nurses communicate directly with Lucas from Wayne County Health Department. There's a series of questions and we explain to them and then we have to go back a lot of times to the families and say, okay, well, when was your son or daughter around somebody who, who had, you know, signs or symptoms and so on? So once we figure out the dates and everything else, we act upon the direction given to us by the county. And sometimes we just have that student athlete quarantine. Sometimes we have to shut down an entire sport, which we've had to do this week for a couple of our sports, actually. So it just depends on all the, the different factors associated with it and we make a decision based on that in collaboration with Wayne County. The other part, the other question that was asked, well, how do we disclose that information? Obviously, we disclose it to the county, but we also, our athletic directors will communicate with, if it's going to impact any gameplay, our athletics directors will communicate with the other schools and cancel games or do whatever we need to do. And they also communicate with the conferences at large, Dearborn and Fortson with the KLA and Etzel Ford, if the situation comes up with the Downriver League, so that everybody's informed and so on. So for, for us, the athletic. So for us, the athletic directors did a terrific job as far as, you know, handling this PowerPoint presentation. What they did is they divided, I think we have eight total sports. So they divided every sport into a separate slide. But the slides are all uniform as far as everything goes. I'm not going to read everything to everyone. I'm sure you can all read it on your own. It'll be part of the board presentation, so people can always access it. But everyone has, you know, I'll read the first couple just to give people an idea. But the first practice day for girls golf was Wednesday, August 12. First date of competition was Wednesday, August 19. Now golf was allowed to continue. Like I said, football, volleyball were our late starting sports because football stopped and then restarted again. And volleyball was never really allowed to start. And then they, well, they were able to start outside, actually, not inside. And when that approval came, that changed some things. So anyhow, with the crowd limitations for golf, it's 100 total people at each event. That includes participants and spectators. Face coverings required at arrival and departure, but not required, this is for the athletes, but not required during practice and competition. Social distancing required is compatible with the sport of golf. Whole season, the regional tournament for golf will be the week of October 5. And on every slide, you'll see this, the return to play guidelines for that sport. So anyone that wants more information about any particular sport can just click on that link and go from there. For boys tennis, again, August 12, we started. August 19 was the first competition date. And boys tennis didn't have any hiccups with regards to starting either. Required arrival for, with regards to face covering, similar to golf, required at arrival and departure, but not required during practice and competition. Girls cross-country, again, the crowd limitation is 100 total at each event, including participants and spectators. Face coverings required at arrival and departure, but not required during practice and competition. And that came out, this just this last week with the executive order 180. Social distancing with all of them required is compatible with the sport. Girls swimming, two spectators allowed per participant. Usually, it's the parents. And just so everybody's aware, we are asking for lists ahead of the competition days. That way, whether it's a home or away event, that way our ticket people at our locations will know who to expect and so on. And the people at our away events will also be prepared for our families when they come. So anyhow, social distancing with swimming is, again, required is compatible with the sport. And then the face covering for the student athletes are required at arrival and departure, but not required while the girls are swimming. For boys soccer, boys soccer face coverings are a little bit different. They are required during competition. Now, keep in mind that they're, within that, any sport, not just soccer, football, you know, of course, you know, falls into the same category as volleyball. If an athlete takes their mask down to, you know, to get a few breaths of air without any, you know, without any interference from the mask or whatever, that's permitted. But however, they are not permitted to play, you know, for an extended period of time with the mask on their chin or anything like that. You know, the mask has to be on. If they take it down for a little bit to, again, to get a couple deep breaths, it's totally permissible. So is everyone going to have their mask on every second of the time? No, probably not. But at the same time, it's overall, if people are honoring the rules as they should. With field hockey, again, similar to football and to boys soccer with regards to rules and expectations and crowd limitations, et cetera. Volleyball is, again, the same. Required, the masks are required at arrival and departure, as well as during practices, and required during competition. Crowd limitation for volleyball is, again, two spectators per participant. I know Gary has spoke to all the engineers and told all the engineers at the high school to make sure that they designated areas on the bleachers of each high school, so that when the bleachers are pulled out for events, people know where they can sit and relatively the space that they need to keep from each other. If it's a husband and wife or two people that live together, that's different. They can sit next to each other. That's totally allowed. Football, the biggest issue with football will probably be because, you know, that's generally our biggest gate event, our biggest gate sport. So football, we're getting a lot of questions with regards to what can, what can people do and what can they not do? And our athletic directors will be sending out more information via their blog, via Twitter as much as they can, and sharing with their athletes and coaches, of course. So for one, tailgating on our property will not be allowed. People tailgate off our property. There's not a whole lot we can do about it. But tailgating on any of the property, parking lot, anywhere around the event will not be permitted at all. We ask that people comply with that. You know, we're not trying to make things more difficult for anyone. And we understand people really want to be at the football games. But at the same time, our biggest, you know, our biggest and most primary motive is to make sure that we handle everything with all the safety guidelines in place, keep everybody safe, and try to, you know, see through the end of the seasons. And we know that if there are upticks in the amount of cases and so on that are confirmed, that that could totally impact our season. So we ask that everybody complies with that. Another one is, can people watch from the fence, you know, around the football fields and so on? Again, that's on our property. So people are watching from the fence, but they're staying far apart. You know, there's only so much we can do, you know, if they're on the sidewalk or what have you. If they're on our property, then it's a little bit different. You know, we're going to ask people to leave and that type of thing. So, you know, again, our goal is to keep, to keep everybody safe and try to stay within compliance of the executive orders and the MHSAA rules. I guess other relevant information, all schools will qualify for the football playoffs this year. Usually, you have to have minimum of five wins and, you know, to even be considered. Six wins gets you in. This year, all schools will qualify, so the MHSAA has already made that decision. Concession stands will not be open at athletic events in the fall, as of right now. Hopefully, that will change. And our booster clubs rely a lot on the concession stand incomes that come and obviously on providing that service to all our spectators. Live streaming of some athletic events, volleyball, boys soccer, field hockey, and football are on track. Hopefully, we can be streaming games online. DHS piloted the program last year and we were able to stream part of the basketball season, the wrestling season as well, and any indoor seasons that took place after the winter sports season. We weren't able to get it going in time for fall. Checking procedures for athletes and coaches remain the same. The temperature check, the screening questions, et cetera. And spectators are required to wear masks and observe social distancing at all times. Again, if people are in the same household and they're next to each other, we are not going to, you know, to ask them to move or anything else. They obviously live in the same home. Lastly, only final comments. We have high school sports an integral part of the school experience and bring the community together. We will do all we can to keep high school sports moving forward as we try and get the needed cooperation to have students return to school. When I say cooperation, when we say cooperation, we're talking about the cooperation of everybody involved, the county, the citizens as far as, you know, practicing social distancing, so that, I know we talked about that extensively earlier, to keeping Dearborn's numbers down. So when we get the cooperation from everyone, from our teachers' unions and our DFT, I'm sorry, our non-teaching unions, et cetera, we, everybody, our ADSA, everybody's doing their part and contributing and sending out the positive messages. Then hopefully, we can return to a little bit of normalcy sometime here in the near future.
We can go into questions. Trustee Thorp?
Mr. Mashur, my questions are regarding the spectators. Since the concession stands are not open, are spectators going to be able to bring food and drink? And if so, able to have their mask off during that time? The second thing is, are the restrooms going to be open for them to use?
Great questions. And both those answers are yes. Spectators would be allowed to bring in snacks if they want snacks and drinks. And of course, just like, you know, if somebody's at a restaurant, they have to have their mask on before they go in. But when they sit at their table, they're fine to, you know, to take their mask off. Again, we ask that they maintain appropriate distancing from other spectators. The restrooms, yes, the restrooms will be open and, you know, will be definitely clean before the events begin. We hope people do their part and keep them that way throughout the event. But if they need to be cleaned during the event, we'll do our best to make sure that's done as well.
Trustee Petchikoff?
Mr. Mashur, I also, it's about spectators as well, but it's for the indoor events like volleyball and swimming. When you say two are allowed per participant, I don't know how many normal participants we have for, like, the girls swimming team. Are there 10? Are there 20? There's two, there's other schools involved. So how many, how many people inside what is, in my recollection of the pool area, a fairly small area, and seating is pretty limited? How many people are we actually talking about being inside the building?
I think max you're looking at a maximum of 80 people inside. Teams can have up to 20 swimmers. They can have more than 20, but for the most part, usually under 20 or around 20 at the high school varsity level. And that's if both parents come with every child, you're looking maximum 80 people.
Can we socially distance them inside of that area?
It'd be more difficult, of course. And, you know, again, you got to remember, for like, if, if my wife and I, for example, go to an event, we're sitting right next to each other. So that'll allow the next couple or whatever to sit a little bit further. But then you'll have, you'll sit in clusters of twos or whatever. So, you know, it's going to be one of those things where we figure out how to do it when we get there. Again, it's, you know, like, we had, our volleyball teams participated in a, like, four-way competition on Saturday at one of our schools. From our school, I believe we only had a total of about 12 parents that attended. So it's, you know, it was a bigger gym, of course, so they were able to accommodate everybody. But at the same time, you know, we're not expecting the same number of people. Like, do we allow two people per?
But they're not always going to, right.
They're not all, so.
So then the next question, just kind of brainstorming here because we know football gets a large audience typically. And even though we're going to try to discourage them from standing along the fence lines, I find it almost impossible to expect that a lot of the students aren't going to huddle up to watch a game if they're not going to be allowed into the stands. If we're going to be live streaming, is there a potential, if we're allowed to have 80 people inside a swimming pool area, that we could have a big screen somewhere where we could socially distance spectators in a way that they could watch the game, but not be sitting in their car on a laptop kind of thing? Still be present, but not also be gathered up along a fence line either? Is that a possibility to consider? Or is that violating something by having them come inside to watch it on a big screen?
Okay, so are you asking about live streaming football games?
Yeah.
That, okay, live streaming football games is something that we're working on, you know, as far as getting all the technology associated with it and so on, you know, to be able to do that. Some schools, like Etzel Ford, for example, is very, very difficult because where they're, you have to, you have to run lines pretty much from, you know, looking into it already. We have to run lines from the school all the way to the press box, which would be difficult to do. Now, there's other ways that might be able to, you know, that we might be able to do it. And we're still trying to explore those things. With Dearborn High, it'd be a lot easier. With Fortson, there'd be some challenges with that as well. So we are going, we are trying to do the live stream thing. Now, with regards to students, we still have a little more control over students than we do over, you know, typical citizens, if you will. You know, with regard to trying to get, now, if people are clustered, we can very easily take action and say, hey, you know, you guys need to be, you all need to be separated and so on. But again, if they're, our students will usually be compliant, especially when addressed by, you know, by our staff and so on. You know, again, it's, can we keep people off the sidewalk? No, legally, we can't. But as far as students go, we can, we have a little bit more leverage when working with our students, but.
Trustee Thorp, you have a comment?
Well, then, speaking again about football, my understanding is that it would be the coaches on the sideline along with the players. And it sounds like the cheer teams are allowed there. Are administrators also going to be present? Because the coaches don't have time to go talk to people lining the fences.
Oh, of course, yes. We'll have security, some of our security guards there. And then we'll also have our administrative staff, as well as other teachers that sign up, you know, to be at the games and so on.
And quite frankly, even though you're saying that on the sidewalks, because it's public property, if there's an executive order saying you can't congregate in groups like that, the police, who are usually at these games, can tell them they have to break up. It's not something that we can't have a say in. So I would hope that we would direct them to try to keep the crowd control. Okay.
I think he agreed with you.
Yeah.
I think, I had a two-part question, but the first part was answered. I was going to say, who's going to police, you know, the visitors, the audience? It sounds like, you know, we're going to have security there. My question is, so Saturday morning, you know, our phones are going to start ringing or emails are going to start coming in that, oh, I drove by the so-and-so field and there was no social distancing, nobody had masks on. You had 10, 15 people at, you know, sitting together. If we get to the point, are we allowed to just say, okay, no more, you know, fans at the football field or soccer field or what have you?
I mean, we are allowed to, of course. It's just a matter of, you know, how that's going to be, just like you're going to have people saying some of the things you're talking about. I mean, to us, we're going to be there. So our athletic directors will be, we already started events. Our athletic directors and Jeff Conway is with us. He can chime in anytime. But our ADs and administrators have already been at various events and been policing the situation and so on. But if it did come, a push came to shove, and we said, you know what? This is becoming too much. We can absolutely say, no spectators are allowed. Now, our visiting teams are going to be too happy about that. But at the same time, if that's what we need to do, then that's a decision we'll make.
And one of the things that I would probably add, too, is that if, if the level of cooperation we've had with our parents and athletes and coaches up till this point continues into events, we really probably don't have very much to worry about because people have been beyond cooperative thus far in terms of wearing masks. You know, we've had a few events so far, soccer, field hockey. We haven't any football games yet. But, you know, the response from the spectators coming in has been, has been, has been excellent. They've complied as much as possible. If someone comes in without a mask on, hey, you got to wear a mask. Oh, yeah, sorry, it was in my pocket. Like, we haven't had any issues yet. So I don't have any reason to be overly concerned. There certainly will be some different challenges with football this year because of the crowd limitations. But people have been nothing but cooperative thus far. They're just happy to have sports back. Kids are happy to be playing. Parents are happy to be able to watch their kids play. So I'm not, I'm not really worried that there's going to be a mass blow-up of issues that are associated with football games because we just haven't seen that yet. We've already had four or five home events and it's been great.
I'm not planting the seeds that there's going to be problems. I just want to make sure it's out there that, yeah, we have. I, obviously, we know what the answer is. We have options. Like, let's say you walk up to somebody and say, hey, you know, I need you to do one, two, three, and they don't give you, you know, they don't, they don't behave the right way. I'm just letting it be known that, yeah, we do have options. Safety first.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
And then, you know, I want to add, like, what Jeff was saying as far as how our parents and everyone has been. Our parents and student athletes have been terrific. I mean, with self-reporting and letting us know that their child, their son or daughter, might have been around somebody and they're going to keep them home on it as a precautionary measure. They've been absolutely terrific as far as disclosing anything with, you know, because they don't want, you know, for one, they don't want their child to be negatively impacted. And for two, the other big part of it is they want to make sure that all other students are healthy and so on. So it's been going very, very well, better than anyone could probably, would probably have expected with regards to all that. uh, with regards to to all that.
Thank you. Trustee Mosse, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question and a comment. Um, my question is about um, spectators when they're saying two per player, so are are players given some sort of t- admission tickets that they pass to others so they can enter the game?
No, no, tickets, they they put their names on the list, so. Yeah, that that's how how it goes, but then the the people coming though still have to pay for admission just so, so everybody's aware of that as well.
Sure.
Yeah, what we've been doing thus far is we've just had a roster from each team at the entrance. And as people come in, uh, you know, what what team are you with? What's your son or daughter's name? Check, check on the roster, pay your admission if that's the case and and in they go. I mean, it's been a pretty seamless system so far. Uh, there are some schools that are using tickets. We elected not to do that. Um, you know, we went with kind of the roster checkoff method, so there's a few other, you know, there's a few other things that people may see at road games where schools are doing things all the differently than we are, but the 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 roster check-in method so far with limited data from just a few home events has worked just fine.
Great, so, um.
President.
I'm sorry, uh, just one comment that I believe live streaming the games, especially football, will um, have people uh, just tune in from home and I think that's a great idea. Um, where people will actually be discouraged uh, to come to the games and we've been saying all of our lives, encouraging parents to come to the games and watch their kids play. We're telling them not to, so it's kind of.
Go ahead, rub it in.
Yeah, so so different, so. Uh, but I think streaming the games will just give the people the option just to watch the game from their home and and will even have people who are probably will not go to the games, but will start watching our our students play.
Sure, thank you. Trustee Lane?
Uh, yes, President Barry, uh, my mind stuck uh, right at the beginning because I think I heard you say that M H S A A is not a nonprofit, it's a for-profit institution?
That way I understand it, yes. Yes and no. I did have a discussion with.
I've been involved in high school sports for a long time. My husband and I uh, have been involved for many decades. Um, I I did not know that. I assumed that there was some kind of quasi-governmental partnership with a nonprofit. Um, I would like to have some more conversations about this because um, I I I'm really shocked, frankly, um, and and I'm wondering, what is, you just said we as a board or as a district have options. What is our contract with M H S A A? How do we know that they're not prioritizing their profits over our students' health? What do we pay to them? How do they make their profits? What do, I assume you think we pay some kind of fee for membership? But um, and and I appreciate that so far this fall, sports have been outdoors and outdoors is good. That's great. Uh, but what about, we, many of us have seen the football player for, I don't remember what university, that died. What about liability? Uh, I'd like to know some of these answers. Um, and and I'm really shocked that we have high school kids playing. You and I spoke about this and I spoke with some other trustees also. Our college is not playing college sports. The Big Ten is not playing college sports in sp- in spite of the President of the United States trying to pressure the conference into playing and yet we have kids playing? Uh, I I'm really shocked and to hear somebody say, we'll be doing wrestling, I cannot imagine a more on-contact sport than wrestling. I mean, it just like sets my hair on end to hear that, we'll be doing wrestling. And I love wrestling. I've attended many wrestling matches, but I am just shocked about all of this. It's great to give positive messages, but we need to give honest messages, not false positives. Uh, so I'd like to have some conversations. I know I will be talking with you, President Barry, but possibly Mister Mashur and Doctor Maleko, also Mister Conway. I I'm just really surprised because I did not know this before and I'm um, I guess I'm I'm disturbed by it. I thought, when I heard that M H S A A was recommending football go-ahead and Michigan Department of Health was not recommending that, I thought it's an honest disagreement. Now, now I have to question a little bit deeper.
Trustee Lane, uh, excuse me one second, though, Mister Mashur. Trustee Lane, I stand corrected. Director Masumali Bezi uh, just notified me that uh, M H S A A is a nonprofit. But there are officers that get paid. Just because it's a nonprofit doesn't mean that there's nobody on the payroll. So stand corrected. So, yeah, but I just recently found out, and I've been involved with youth football for two decades now. Just recently found out. I also spoke to coaches. I also spoke to coaches that they didn't have a clue what was going on. So the fact that you and I spoke about this, where, okay, the governor and uh, you know, the state is saying one thing and this association is saying diff- something different, that's when I started doing the research and found out that, yeah, they're a separate entity. Uh, we heard the the video when they first canceled uh, uh, high school football. Of the executive officer's name is Mark something and he did, he did tell us that, you know, he has a senior playing high school football, so then two, three weeks later, decisions was reversed, so I'm not sure how much had that that to with it, but uh, uh, the reason I asked for this report is, yeah, I wanted to make sure you know, our parents, our constituents, our community members also understood that. And this is gonna start a discussion. You know, Dearborn's always been the leader. This is gonna start a discussion that maybe, just maybe, we need to have an association, our own association as part of the, you know, state governance, what have you. Uh, I will be reaching out to, you know, our senator and our state rep to say, okay, where does that start? As soon as they decided to bring back football, I tried to reach out to the governor's office, but it was during a holiday weekend. I didn't get anywhere, then we got busy this week with uh, you know, with our meeting coming up, so. Yeah, this is gonna start a discussion, Trustee Lane, that, you know, hopefully goes in the right direction, yeah. We, as you know, the educators, uh, you know, the state government legislators need to have a little more control, you know, where our kids are. And this has been the number one issue I've been hearing about. How can you let kids play football or swim, which you're saying is they're not safe? And that kind of explains it why right now. So with that being said, I know Trustee Mosse had a question?
No, I was just a correction that.
That they are nonprofit? And the way I understand it, it's a nonprofit, but there are officers of the board that get paid. Uh, Trustee McDonald, did you have any questions?
Yes, I have a quick question. When I was reading all the information that was sent through, it did say that officials at games were not responsible for um, making sure that uh, masks are worn and social distancing is done. So I'm assuming that like maybe administration would take care of that burden on the partici- I mean, on the uh, spectator side and coaches would on the player's side. Is that correct or who would be in charge of maintaining that?
That's a fantastic question. Uh, so the officials have been told in all sports that they are not responsible for enforcement of the mask issue because it's not a rule. And their job as officials is to enforce rules and there's no rulebook anywhere that says you have to wear masks in in games or in contests or in practice. That's a, that's a result of an executive order. Uh, the executive order said that the, said that the game administration is in charge of enforcing the mask rule. So e- even in our few, in our few games we've had this season already, you know, a- at the high school here, um, you know, there have been officials who have come to me and said, hey, I just wanna give you a heads up. You know, this team or that team, there's a guy not wearing his mask. He needs to put his mask on. So they're working through the site administrator or the supervisor of the game to try to deal with the with the mask issue, as well as they talk about it in their pre-game meeting. You know, they mentioned that masks are important, you need to wear them and stuff like that. But as far as enforcement or there being any sort of penalty for somebody not wearing a mask, there's nothing in the rules that 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 dictate that it falls to the manager of the game to to deal with the mask issue, both on the field and 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 by extension of the crowd too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Petakov?
No, I don't.
Oh, I thought you had. Trustee Amid, do you have any questions? Because I can't see the screen, that's why I'm asking.
No.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, great. Thank you very much, Mister Mashur and Mister Conway. Appreciate you.